Next year, and it's happening, no matter what we do, you're throwing your garbage away, I'm throwing my garbage away. There's no, Jim, unless you tell everybody not to throw their garbage out, we're spending 2.3 million dollars. It's, it's just the way it is. So the expenditure portion of that budget, you know, gasoline prices, we know what gasoline prices are, we built those into the matrix. I know, I know what they're doing. I mean, the numbers come out every year, year after year after year. So if we don't raise the rates, we're gonna have to take money out of the bank, or we're gonna have to cut services. So I guess that's my, as Kathy, thank you very much for allowing me to stand on my soapbox. And the same goes with sewer. Liz, you're looking at me as you want to ask me a question.
I'd ask a question, but I, we, we do have a lot of different handouts. Would you be able to find that one that shows how the sewage flow just drops dramatically?
Right in the middle of that, correct? Here, no, that's a service charge.
Yeah.
There we go. That's commercial and manufacturing.
Yeah, that was the one.
And then this is the, this is us, this is my house and your house. And you can see that there was a spike for a couple of years, five, six, seven years ago, I have no idea. But since that point in time, our water usage is, as residents of the city of Erie has gone down. And, and you know, it's, it's a, it's a catch 22. You raise rates and people use less water. And there aren't, there unfortunately, there aren't as many people maybe in the city as there were 10 years ago, 20 years ago, or 30 years ago. So in order for Basil to run that plant, you know, and you, you as a group, all approved the contracts for the ferric chloride, the polymer, there were two others, two weeks ago, and I don't remember what they were, and you saw, I mean, how much those things went up. One contract, I don't remember which one it was, they would only give us a fee until the end of March. So the cost of running that plant is going up. And Jim, you're gonna ask me about the Suburbans, and yes, they are. When you look, when you look at the budget book, the fee we're getting from the suburban users has gone up by a million dollars. Because they pay their proportional portion of the expenses of running that plant, based on the flow. And it also shows, Christine, maybe one more up, the flows going now down, the flows going into the plant, the city users, which helps us in the revenues, the city users are not lagging behind what the, what the Suburbans are using. Where it used to be the city users were 55, 60%, and the Suburbans were 40%. This past year, it's actually been the flow coming into the plant is about equal to each other. And I've got, gone off on about 43 different tangents, and I'm sorry about. But my point is, without going into the numerical portion of this, if we don't raise the rates now, we're gonna have to find out a way to, to bridge the gap. We're gonna have to find out a way to make sure we can cover all the services that we're all used to. And we know for a fact, two years from now, three years from now, whenever we get through, using up whatever money is available, that, that rate increase, as we used to do, you know, every four years, it's gonna go up 20%, and then nobody's gonna be happy, and we're gonna be in a position where nobody's gonna be able to handle that. So, you know, I,
Is that taking a million out of the sewer fund every year for the budget?
Well, we don't have the bill, you know, we don't have the availability to take a million out of the fund anymore. There's no money left. You know, where we used to have four, five, six million dollars in fund balance, we're down to about two, two and a half, three million dollars in that bank account. And if something bad happens, as did down on Garrison Run, we have to have the ability to pay for that. We have to have reserves.
So we have 10 million in the ARP money?
Well, that's, that's a different pot of money.
Oh, not American or?
It is. And I'd like some of it, so.
Just wondering.
Can I?
I know I asked for an A to C council meeting, that revenue replacement from the ARP, she thinks we use?
Well, we had 4 million dollars last year, and based on where, based on the calculation, we had a good, and I mean, as I come to the finance committee meetings and talk about it, we had, we're gonna make budget this year, but the federal government in doing the calculation is allowing you to increase your, it's a mathematical calculation, anybody wants to see it, I'll be glad to show it to you. But we're gonna be, we're gonna be able to take about a 4 million dollar revenue replacement for this year. So for two years, it should be around 8 million dollars, depending on if we take it and how we use it.
Which will pay for fire trucks?
The mayor and I have talked about that over the last couple of months, and he wanted to get through the budget sessions before we sat down and formulated a plan to do that. But yeah, I mean, the math of it is, Jim, as Chief Walco, is he still out there? Chief said, okay, two fire trucks is gonna be two and a quarter, two and a half million dollars. You approve these police cars, every police car, outfitting the car, and in the handouts, it's $50,000. They need, based on the mileage that those cars go each year, you know, we replace three, four, five cars a year. So you get two fire trucks in three years worth of police cars, and you're well over 3, 3 and a half million dollars. Public Works needs a new street sweeper, which are,
Cities need a non-garbage increase, is there a way to use that increase to offset that, some of that?
If.
Cause it is a necessity that you have refuse and sewer.
Well, we don't have any, there's no capital built in to the budget this year for garbage trucks or sewer, any capital to sewer plant. So we're not asking for anything. Although AJ and Chuck will tell you that we need, we need garbage trucks, and we're gonna have to deal with that, because we haven't bought new garbage trucks since about 18 or 19. We're gonna need new garbage trucks, you know, we've,
Two, you were that?
Two used trucks.
Those were used?
Replacing,
From Canada, they were used?
Yeah, replacing three trucks. So we're gonna need truck, we're gonna need trucks there. So I hope I, did I answer your, that money can be used for capital, yes it can, the revenue replacement. But the other question is, do we want to use it for revenue replacement? Or if you go to the very first page, or the third page in your handout book, where I always talk about fund balance, we need to have cash in bank, we need to have reserves. If we don't have cash in bank, and we don't have reserves, and something bad happens, because ARP money's gone in five years. You know, we have the three years window, and then two years, you have to commit it and spend it. Five, six years from now, there's no, you know, there's no ARP money. We're, and something bad, you know, something bad happens, where are we gonna get the money to do that? Unless we have the proper reserves. And GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, when they talk about two months, I mean, you and I, when we were young kids and getting married and buying houses, the guy at the bank said you should have six months of money in the bank, didn't he? I mean, none of us do, but, but you have to have reserves, so.
And I know, did we, for our million dollar security at City Hall, are we using, getting reimbursed for that?
Well, we took that out of the capital fund to,
Could we use that?
We could use that as ARP to rep, and replenish the capital fund, yes, we could. Yes, and again, that's what I said, the mayor and I were gonna sit down after all the budget sessions are over, and try to figure out what's the best course of action, and where we need to spend that money, and how we need to spend that money.
We have about 300,000 into two garbage trucks we purchased.
Yes, correct. And Chris thought, Chris Moore got reimbursed for, for some of that money from insurance.
And then the rest of it came out of?
The risk management fund.
Okay, that, then you put the ARP, well, revenue replacement, and not delete that account per se?
Well, risk management, we've had a good year the last couple of years, well, health insurance wise, based on what, you know, high market UPMC thought was going to happen. So we luckily had a couple extra dollars there. And, and you've heard Chris Moore.
Part of my thought process is, instead of just using our money, if we can think outside the box a little bit, and use that ARP money, so we're not completing our?
It would be available, yes.
And who, you're saying it's gonna be roughly 4 million for?
Last year. And you approved, a couple of weeks ago, we, we did a councilmatic transfer, where we moved that first 4 million, and we're, we're sitting it in the capital fund in anticipation of spending on, I don't wanna use the word whatever, but on whatever.
There's money there, we've just gotta be smart. To work the bill, it's not just no.
No. Okay, so I,
I, can I, everybody thinks, I guess, that I talk too long, but that's because I do my homework, so. Let's go back to the city of Erie, Pennsylvania, five-year financial management plan, which was, of course, created before the pandemic. But what it says in here, and this is one of the things what we should really do when the new council comes on board, to be, make sure that we're as efficient as possible. The administration has taken up a lot of these recommendations, but we haven't done all of them. We need to go back and look at these and see which ones still make sense in light of the pandemic. But page 77, "The city has traditionally enacted sewer rate increases once every three to five years." "The system's expenditures rise annually and the revenue does not, which means the fund gradually loses ground until the next sporadic rate increase. This approach also produces steeper rate increases, like the one shown below, which are potentially harder for businesses and residents to accommodate than a more predictable pace of smaller increases." So it was a page right out of this book that said, let's do, you know, smaller increases. Similar recommendations on the refuse fee, although a little bit different, because the refuse fee, if you're a, a commercial business, you can contract with somebody to do your refuse pickup. So, you know, one of the things that was periodically raised, and this was a long time coming, should we subcontract our garbage pickup? But the actual recommendation in here, the consultant did not see that that would produce, you know, substantial savings. So it was a popular idea, because you figure, you know, you're paying city salaries versus, you know, private contractor. But according to the consultant, that really wasn't gonna save us that much money. Anyhow, it says the same thing. So here was the recommendation. Schedule regular increases to the sewer rates. Responsible parties, administration, council, and finance, eliminate deficits in the refuse recycling fund, and revisit transfer to the general fund. Again, council is one of the responsible parties. So this, this didn't come out of thin air. The idea that we, that we do this.
Since 2006, and we've talked about incremental increases to refuse and sewer every year since then. And I know, everybody on this, on this group, we all sit here each year and go, yes, that's a good idea. I mean, you've all said that, good idea, good idea, good idea. And then I guess, myself included, 16 years later, as a group, we don't do it. And then, you know, a year or two later, now we get caught up, and it's like, oh boy, we have to, we have to have this big increase. So the sooner we,
I think the water authority does it.
They do. Christine, please put that out. When I started, this is, this is the one that, the most telling thing in the world, and, and, and I, I'm not gonna pick on the water authority, but they, when I first started here in 2006, you can see that their rate was within a dime of ours. And now, 16 years later, their rate is what, a dollar and a quarter more than ours is? And if we all drive around town, and somewhere up in my neighborhood, and somebody else may live up by me somewhere, they're putting up a hundred million dollar building, and they're fixing things all the time. And they're putting in new buildings, and putting in new pipes.
And all in the city, I really just,
Yes, yes.
Not to interrupt, but they are being proactive, because.
They have the money. We don't have the money, because, and, and, and we, we have a, I mean, we've allowed them to do that. There's no public outcry over, oh my gosh, the water authority's raising their rates every year, every year, every year, every year. But we as a group raise rates, and everybody's mad at us. And Ed, I see, I, I feel that way. I mean, and I like Paul Voight-Tech, and I golf with him. But look, he, look at what he does, and we don't, and we wanna raise rates just a little bit. And we're like the worst people in the world for doing it, so.
That's not the point, Paul.
I understand the point, people are hurting, but we've allowed them, I mean, we should call down at the water authority and say, stop raising your rates. But we don't.
Call from there, right?
We are actually not as expensive as the surrounding cities of Pennsylvania with our water as well.
That's correct also.
And just, one of the things I would add is, thank, one of the options that PFM presented, but didn't wanna go on, would not recommend, was actually, you know, selling the water system to a private utility. And when that's happened across Pennsylvania, I, there's, there's huge problems with that. Huge, talk about outcries about raising rates, and, you know, you don't wanna give away your, your water authority. I think we did, we got it, we got a pretty good deal when we, but I said, let's get the valuation first, and then the amount we got was actually higher. But, you know, that's an option, when people wanna privatize, but water customers end up hurting, from what I've seen, from, there's probably two private companies across Pennsylvania that have gobbled up a lot of smaller water utilities. Yeah, what's the other one?
And you're, you hit the nail on the head, though. And it's funny that that was given to us, but yeah. Every time one of these water deals goes through, it's really bad for the municipality. And I'm gonna say every time, because all you need to do is Google it. So I'm done, unless anybody else has any questions, and I'm sorry for taking up 15 minutes of time. But any questions, again, this is your deliberation, anything you wanna ask myself or my staff, we're here. And do you want me to excuse myself, or?
What's the process? If we ask for a cut, you say no?
Well, I'm gonna tell you why it's not, why it's not feasible, correct. But then you, it's up, you know, to vote on it as a group.
When was the last everything created?
19, 10, 14, and 19.
Sewer?
19, and then before that, it was three or four years, 19, 14, 10, again, same thing. Yeah. We did increase the service charge for sewer in '20, but again, that was a pass-through from water to us, because as the water authority does our billing, that's what they're charging.
No, Paul, please understand, I'm not trying to be a pain in the,
No, no, I understand too.
All I'm asking for was a bone to the people who have been suffering. One-year bone, alright? If we gotta, if we have to charge more next year, if there isn't more ARP money coming in, then the people will understand if it's something they have to do. I'm just saying, with all the money coming in, there's gotta be money there to give those folks a break. And I will say that until they throw me out of here. Thank you.
They could use less water. I mean, obviously, people did that. That's how they dropped their sewer rates, because they conserved.
Yes, so in your deliberation, Ed, I'm not gonna lie to you, and I'm not gonna, what you're saying could, it could be done, but it could, it could be done, but it could be harmful in the future. I can't say, I, I can't say it will be harmful, but we do know that if we do that, we're gonna have less cash. So it could, could just more of a, probably.
Yeah.
So the AR, ARP revenue replacement, did that offset this for this year?
Did that, or could that?
Could it?
Yes.
Paul, could you tell us again about the bond rating for the sewer bonds?
Well, the sewer,
One of my favorite stories.
The sewer authority, as, as we have a bond rating, the sewer authority has a bond rating also. And they issued a very small refunding bond in the springtime. And we go through a rating call, where they'll call myself, and Basil gets on the call also, and we'll talk about the plant, the operation, and then they'll talk about city finances, etc. The rating people, and I, I learned something this time, even after doing it 16 years, is they actually look at the Erie Times News newspaper on a, you know, daily, weekly, monthly basis to see what we're doing. If I'm the rating person for Erie, I kinda know what's going on in Erie, but they looked at our financial statements for the last two or three years, and they saw that we were using up the reserves of the sewer fund, which is a direct tie-in to the sewer authority. And they, they downgraded our bonds to ratings from A minus to a BBB plus with a negative outlook, because, because we were using up our, our cash in bank fund balance. And then fighting, 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 and I mean, you just get sick of listening to me, but I was on the phone with these people two or three different times. The bond rating still went down.
When did they do that? What?
May-ish, June. But it did get downgraded one grade to BBB plus, stable. So, but they did downgrade it, and if you wanna read the report from Standard and Poor's, the report says lack of cash reserves, liquidity, and that's,
So now with this,
But, and I said to me, well,
I keep going back to ARP, ARP, but with that being into the picture a little bit more, wouldn't that change that for better rating?
No, because our liquidity, we still, even if, Jim, if you took the sewer portion of the, as the mayor told you on the phone, it's about a million, 31337, you know, 8900 here, 4500 there, refuse and sewer. If we took half a million of the revenue replacement and put it into the sewer fund, so that there wouldn't be a sewer increase, that still doesn't help the cash in bank. We're still in a liquid position of only having two and a half, three million dollars in that bank account. What they're looking, they're looking for, they're looking for two months, and you know, you have a 25 million dollar budget, two months of a 25 million dollar budget is about 4 million bucks. So we're a little short in that bank account. So when they, when we do the rating call, and I have to sit there and give, well, why do you do this, and why don't you have any money, and we, but I, you know, I tried to explain to them, it, it's one of the things my team and I do, we make sure, even though we don't have a lot of money, we've never had any problems. In 15 years, we've never had to take out a tax anticipation note, because we make sure the money that we have works with what we have, what we have to do. But the rating agencies, they have, they have checklists, and the checklist says, you have to have this money, and we don't. And it's, and, and, so our bond rating goes down, if we were gonna issue bonds, we're gonna have to pay higher bond insurance. The banks look at you and say, what's your bond rating, and you know, interest rates, or when, when you deal with things like that, that can fluctuate. When Chris Moore talks to the property casualty companies, they always wanna know what your bond rating is. So it's a very, it's a very big deal. And that's why we should be so happy that,
What's in our general fund research?
About 10 million dollars. Again, with a 95 million dollar budget, you're talking about 11, 12%, and that's below 16%. And we've never got hit on it yet, but it, it's, And we've never got hit on it yet, but it, it, it's, it's there, it's there.
That's part of their scope when they're.
Yes.
Or other, if you take it out of the dental fund, but you put it in the sewer.
Then, well, that makes it even worse. And, and remembering, the real estate tax money doesn't come in until March, okay? So I got to deal with January and February with eight, ten million dollars of, of payroll, and all just the regular bills that come through on a weekly basis. Now, we spend a hundred, sixty, hundred, and you approve the list of bills, it's a hundred, sixty, eighty, a hundred, eighty thousand dollars of bills every week, and it's happening.
You keep telling us.
Well, you prove that you, it's, I took it back upstairs, but it's on your list of bill sheet. So we need X amount of dollars to get us through when those real estate taxes come. And, you know, if, if, if there's no, no curb cut money coming in, and none of this money coming in, none of that money coming in, we've never gotten to the point where we had no, well, the year I got here in two thousand and five, I was left with no money in the bank. But, well, you were on the paper then, you remember that, the box of bills that was, when it was in my room. It could be bad, and I'm not trying to be a doomsayer or naysayer. It, I mean, we, we, this is what we do. Make sure we have the money so people can operate this business. But how much do you want to, I mean, how low do you want to go? You know, the limbo game. I mean, how low do you want to go before you, you could have a problem? No, we're, we're A-stable for the general fund. We're BBB plus, stable.
Which are still.
Decent, but, you know.
So aren't we really at the point, I'm sorry.
It was pretty good, yeah.
Aren't we at the point where if, if people are in favor, if there's a majority in favor, but I don't think there is, I could be wrong, who want to eliminate those two fee increases, then aren't we going to have to cut services or bodies or something?
Money, some, take the money out of fund balance, or take the money, the money.
Right.
Services, I mean, Liz, you know, services, again, like I said, tipping fees. There's not a lot of, unless you want to cut, you know, Chuck was talking, the tire pickup, it's ten thousand dollars. But, so that's, you know, but large item pickup, we've done a lot of work with large item pickup as opposed to the old May way of doing it. We're not getting, if, if you get rid of those services, it's possible, it's possible we may not have the tipping fees we did. But is it possible also, and I'm going to ask this in a rhetorical manner, I don't have large item pickup, and I got a, a couch in my back room, and I just take it in the pickup truck and throw it in some alleyway. We're going to have to pick it up and throw it away anyways. Now, I, I may be getting a little overboard with that, but we all know that in the past, you know, Chuck, Chuck Zisk worked in the streets department. He could get you down here, or we could get him down here, and he could talk about how he had to go pick that stuff up when he was in the truck. I mean, if I get stuff in my house, I'm going to throw it out. Where am I throwing it? I'm not going to pay for it to go up to the landfill myself. So cutting services is a possibility. But do you really want to cut services? I think somebody, when I was upstairs watching, somebody mentioned Mario Bagnone. And, and God rest his soul, Mario brought up the don't pay your bill, or, or throw it down the street on your neighbor's front lawn. Or so, I mean, you know, now we're going to have neighbors fighting with each other. You threw your garbage on my. So cutting services is for the public welfare is, I guess you could do it, but are we really? Is that what, is that as a society, is that what we're looking to do? You know, cutting services. Can't cut any services of the wastewater. I mean, there's nothing we're cutting down there.
Some more money around, give the people a break, what we're doing. Trying to do.
Half of it.
But.
One or the other. Just throwing it out. There's just got to be different options.
It'll just, it'll just cut into the park improvements then. Because we're, we're planning to come to you on Tuesday at the study session with a proposal to obligate the rest of the funds, the five million for park improvements, the, the three point five million to improve, to remediate and improve the Quinte site, and to implement the East Bay Front Greenway, and to do all the neighborhood revitalization work in collaboration with the Groundwork Trust and the Cities of Service Love Your Block program. So that's, we're, we're going to be coming with about eight point five million dollars for that. If we're, if we are going to say we want to put one point three million towards sewer and refuse fees, then we're going to have to, we have to cut somewhere. So we're, you know, it'll be in the park improvements then, what you guys said, you actually wanted ten million dollars for that, and we were proposing five million. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. There's, there's not any like leftover, I guess. It either comes from fund balance, or it comes from something else that we want to do. Something has to be cut, unless, unless Paul has.
Renee's working with Kathy and Jackie and Lisa from my, up my office in the ARP money. And I've, I, you know, I got my own deal here, she's got her own deal there, so never the twain shall meet, but, but. Yeah, with the revenue replacement money, could we do that? But then we're not going to be able to, if, if, if she's saying right now that, that I'm not going to get my four million for next year for revenue replacement, because they've already promised that out, then we're going to have to deal, somehow we're going to have to deal with fire trucks, police cars, and bridging the gap of the water and sewer bills. So.
Was that four million going this year, then?
Well, it's sitting in the bank account, in the capital account. And again, I said, I'm going to talk to the mayor once we're done with all of this.
It's not spoken for, we got it.
Well, but the fire chief needs, as, as he spoke about, somehow we're going to have to buy a couple of fire trucks. As you looked in the handout, I mean, some of these things are old.
Talking two and a half million for those two trucks.
Correct.
You got that.
And then, and then some fire, some not fire, police cars.
They get two less police cars.
Over the next three or four years.
Hundred grand there.
We actually need more if we're going to add, if we're going to add the police.
You're not going to add the police. Were you here last night? The other night, we're here, you're not adding any police. The police, the first group of police coming in in February are taking over for people who are leaving.
Right. Then the next nine coming in in May will be new.
He said the next group's going to come in September.
May. Then another group in September.
May.
Yeah, and, and Chief said, we're only going to, we're going to need one car.
One car.
One car, maybe a couple detectives. So.
It was more, it was a total of, I thought, six cars. I don't have all that with me. I thought it was six cars.
Money, even, the money to make, you know, nine, nine policemen in May? Instead of having the allocation for the year on those policemen, you're not going to start paying them until when?
Right, but there would be nine in May, nine in September, so the, that, that was all figured into the fourteen million dollar transfer. It's not going to be less because we're not hiring.
I guess I'm confused because I think that there's three people maybe against the fee increases. And I know we can't vote at this meeting, but are the rest of us going to give final approval to the budget with the fee increases? Because otherwise, why are we, what are we doing here? Who am I, and why am I here?
I think the biggest thing, why, part of the reason why we're going to change money, whether it be revenue replacement or something in the budget that can be trimmed a little bit, dial, plus one fee, or the other fee, or half the fee, or some, you know, there's some wiggle room somewhere. That's all, that's why.
So we need someone to say if there's wiggle room, right? And if I'm hearing correctly, we don't have wiggle room.
Well, no, I.
I, I'm asking.
There is, but it's up to us if we want to make them adjustments in other ways, which if it's the appetites, counts, I guess. Want to take one point three million on the ARP that might be allocated for park restoration. I don't, you know, that's one of the choices, one of the options we could have.
Can we just repeat for the public what these costs would be? Because we're alarming people by talking about fees. We got them scared about stormwater. And there is no property tax increase, um, and there will be no property tax increase for, what are we projecting?
Twenty-four, at this point in time.
So we're at least keeping that stable.
It was three, three dollars and thirty cents per quarter for sewer, and four dollars and seventy-five cents per quarter for refuse. So the total is eight dollars and five cents per quarter, which equates to thirty-two dollars and twenty cents a year on average.
Thank you, Renee.
Small pittance to tell the people that we want to thank them for sticking it up and chump change.
I don't think anybody's saying it's a small pittance or chump change. Nobody's trying to be snarky about it.
Snarky?
Snarky. No one's saying to people whatever you just said. We, we understand, but we have an opportunity now with ARP and with the infrastructure funds to get the city on the right course. We have an opportunity starting anew in January with some new council members and fresh eyes coming on board. Just start looking, look back at the recommendations from PFM. What have we not done? Because there hasn't been the political will, or more likely, a lot of times the capacity. Because I know the people are working really hard. And when we talked to Bruce Katz, um, a week ago, he talked about the need to really build up capacity in local governments to be able to find ways to spend this money in a productive way that creates change. I don't mean change, you know, it actually makes your city better to leverage other funds. So there's opportunity here. We shouldn't take this as the last, as the, the last word on how the government operates or how the city operates. We need to be doing that innovation and looking for efficiencies. And there are actually recommendations in PFM about looking at the sewer fund and looking at, you know, how, how that authority operates, but that's a, a too big a bite to, to talk about now, you know, as the budget deadline looms. But it shouldn't be off the table, it should be on the table.
So can just say we raised them this year, or we, with the citizens, or the next council will be looking at similar.
Yes. That's the, that's the plan. In the five-year plan in the back of the budget book, yes. There's going to be three to four percent annual average increases in both of those funds.
And taking a million out of the sewer fund every year.
Still take it.
Yes, that's correct, out of both.
And like you said, we don't have a crystal ball. If I recall, and this was probably about twenty years ago at least, because, uh, it was a long time ago. But there was a sinkhole situation, I don't know if anyone remembers. There was a sinkhole situation off of Zimmerman, no, off of Zimmerman Road on East Thirty-third Street, off of Zimmerman, um, that, uh, was pretty like, wow, it was a situation. And things like that happen. And, uh, again, like I said, this would have been like about twenty-five years ago, maybe or so. But I remember it because, um, it was actually, uh, where, it was right near where Adam Trott lived at the time. But years ago, like his, his kids were like small, small. Um, anyways, things like that happen, like a sinkhole, like, wow. We don't know what to expect. We didn't expect the pandemic, it happens. We don't know what to expect. So we do need some money in the reserves just because we don't know what to expect.
Yeah, well, as, as you said, bigger picture, longer term, the mayor's Lurde program is going to bring in some real estate tax money in the, in the, in the near future.
It's, it's a long-term approach, and we need, we need solutions to get there. I know we already are taking solutions to get there. But, you know, again, this is, this discussion is very important. We're talking about, you know, the, what taxpayers are paying right now. What, you know, that's very important to everybody out there.
Yes.
But, uh, we need to really have more vision thinking, and I know the administration is doing that. But maybe with council, uh, and the next council, you'll have some of those vision meetings to really concentrate on new income, not just how we're going to raise income because we know all these things are raising in prices.
And I will say, that was one of the reasons when, when we, when we did the lease prepayment deal with the water authority, and we held back that fifteen million dollars to use over the next four or five years, and we used some in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we saved that money so that we could stave off a real estate tax increase so that some of the ideas and programs the mayor, um, wanted to implement would, would get us through there.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we saved that fifteen million dollars just for that very reason.
Yeah.
Paul, not counting police and fire. How many people have we added onto the, the ranks here at City Hall this year? Managerial.
You know, Ed, ninety-nine percent of the questions you ask, I know the answer. Christine does all the people pages, maybe ten or so. A lot of them are reimbursed by grants or, or such. Um, you know, I'll reference right here on page one. You know, two years ago, we had six hundred thirty-three people. This year, we have six hundred forty-three, and next year, we're looking at six hundred sixty-six. Full times, full-time equivalents.
I'm just saying, in a period where we're supposed to be counting our pennies, we're adding people.
A lot, like I said, a lot of those are, are reimbursed through different things.
They'll be gone when the grant's gone. But what their pensions and all that, they contribute.
Yes. But they, they only get back what they put in. There's no added interest or anything. Like if I, if I started today and contributed two thousand dollars over two years to my pension, and then I quit, retired, whatever, I would only get two thousand dollars back. I wouldn't get two thousand plus interest.
Right, that's true.
So actually, I mean, as terrible as this sounds, you know, if somebody does a state of vesting, it kind of helps the pension. I know that sounds bad, but it kind of helps the pension plan because, you know, after eleven years, your contribution with interest is going to build up, and the plan keeps that.
You're the governor of Major League Baseball now.
Yeah.
Sign a five-year contract.
Yeah.
Then you're gone. Scary. I'm sorry.
No, that's.
Kathy, anything more?
I don't know if anyone else has anything else to say. If not, what do we do?
Say goodnight, I guess, right? We're done?
Are we going to schedule another meeting, or are we going to, Mel, do you want to say it? No? Okay, you're not ready?
Are we ready to vote on the budget? Here, but if, if we're not, then we have to have another meeting.
Yes.
Don't know what's in it, so what's, what's the difference? We'll be told after, in fact, like we do everything else. I knew where the money was bouncing around, but we don't have. I just feel a lot better, that's it. But I think Liz said, the will of the board says four votes for it. Whatever you guys want to do.
Well, like, um, it's a quality of life issue. Like if we toe the line and don't raise things, then we stay pretty much at status quo if we're not spending the ARP money to, uh, put into the parks or the neighborhoods or whatever. And I think we saw in the last administration that we didn't want status quo. We didn't, that's why, one of the reasons actually why I ran for city council is because, um, I felt that it was stagnant and I wanted to make a difference. And now I see, uh, an administration that wants to take care of blight and remediation and more jobs and better neighborhoods. But it's just going to take some time. Because four years, even though it, it seems like a long time, isn't a long time. And things take time. So I would like to see them stay the course. But again, that's at a cost of, what did we say, $40 a year for us? I mean, myself, I, um, am still working, so I can do it. I can see where other seniors might not be able to do it. But getting back to the beer and cigarettes and lottery issues, people spend a lot of money on things that, like in social studies right now, teaching first grade, a want and a need. And that was actually just a lesson that they had yesterday at Makerspace. And sometimes people think their wants are a need. And no, you don't have to have that. I don't want to reiterate because people do it, but you know, what are the, you know what I'm talking about.
That being said, I think we should at least keep the study session on the parks. It'd be interesting to see what that's all about.
Right, we have to have the study session, that's the plan, that's where the ARP is.
And for whatever time it takes to imagine. Would you use that 15 minutes of that to say, uh, our final decision on the budget?
We'll be here.
That would probably have to be publicly documented though, that the study session will have a little bit of budget deliberation in there.
When is it?
Tuesday, December 7th, 5:30 PM. Another missing of mug night for-
I'm not bringing dollars.
But I, you know, I'm not there.
Madam Chair. Our job as council at this point is to approve the budget or make specific cut recommendations, not general. We can't move on if we get this money, if we get that money. It must be specific. And in doing that, whatever cuts we make, we're going to hold administration to what they say that we're going to do. But we're going to hold them to the point where we want them to do something with less money. That's what the new council is going to deal with. Holding their feet to the fire with a plan that we take, or we took money from that particular plan to do things. I'm a senior citizen, I'm on fixed income. Some people think I have money. I struggle just like everyone else. So let's either make the cuts and move on or approve the budget. And if we approve the budget, then we have all the rights in the world to hold their feet to the fire. Because that's what they ask for. But if we make cuts and there are substantial cuts, we can't hold them accountable because we took money from a plan that was submitted. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say anything? If not, we can call this meeting to end. Thank you.